I'd like to thank each and every one for being here tonight. Though it was an unusual time, but we, I think this will be a very informative and necessary meeting. And again, I appreciate everybody being here, and I want to wish each and every one of you a Happy New Year. But I'll call to order the Franklin County Board of Supervisors meeting for this special joint agenda meeting with the Franklin County School Board. Chairman Worley.
Thank you Chairman Thompson. Yes, thank you, Happy New Year. I am thankful that the Board of Supervisors agreed, wanted to meet, have an informational meeting tonight about some of the things going on, some of the issues we have coming up in the current year. So I would like to call Franklin County School Board, joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors to order.
Thank you. Well, I'll stand, we'll have our opening prayer, and then Chairman Worley will do the closing to the class. You'll join with me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for your love, we thank you for what you do for us, for watching over us and protecting us. Lord, we ask you for this meeting tonight, that you will give us the wisdom and the knowledge to absorb the information that we'll get, and help us, Lord, that we will use it into the best interests of our citizens in the county. Again, I thank you for everything. I ask for those that are not here, under all the sickness that's going on, that you will comfort and heal their bodies, and in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You sit. All right, we'll start over here on this, and I'm going to start with our clerk. I asked her to go around the room for the county side here, and everybody introduce and tell your, what your duties are, and your, as a matter of fact, I'm going to relinquish to our guests first.
No, thank you Chairman Thompson, I appreciate that. Then I'll start with our clerk. She doesn't get enough recognition, so Mrs. Burnett, if you'd like to start, then we'll work our way down.
I'm Andy Burnett, I'm school board clerk.
My name is Jeff Worley, I am the chairman of the Franklin County School Board, representing the Rocky Mount District.
I'm Dawn McCray, I serve as vice chair, and I serve Arboon District.
I'm Kevin Sears, I'm the superintendent of Franklin County Public Schools.
Tim Overstreet, Assistant Superintendent.
Arlette Greer, representing Blackwater District.
Johnson Holly, Blue Ridge District.
Carletta Whiting, Snow Creek District.
Scott Agee, Union Hall District.
Rebecca Slocum, Gills Creek District.
Thank you. I'm clerk.
My name is Madam Flores, I'm the board clerk.
Ronnie Thompson, Boone District.
Good evening, I'm Chris Whitlow, county administrator, nice to have you with us this evening.
Good evening, I'm Steve Sandy, Deputy County Administrator.
Good evening, Brian Carter, Deputy County Administrator.
Good evening, Marshall Jamison, Blackwater District.
Nick Mitchell, Snow Creek District.
Happy New Year, I'm Mike Carter, Rocky Mount District Supervisor, and it's nice to have all these folks in attendance tonight.
Good evening, I'm Lori Smith, Gills Creek District, and I welcome the school board and school staff with us this evening.
And I'm Dan Quinn, I'm the supervisor for the Union Hall District.
Thank you all, and I want to give a special welcome to all of our guests that are out here, and I hope you can hear, and I've seen that a lot of you are the good Baptists, because you started to the back. But anyway, a member of our staff to make sure that we keep all the sound y'all going. All right, Mr. Whitlow, I'll turn it over to you and Superintendent, how y'all want to do this update.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll likely defer most of this to our superintendent, Dr. Sears, nice to have you with us. Dr. Sears and county staff, our finance team, of course, a few weeks ago began some conversations regarding opportunity for both boards to come together and have a few updates. We have a lot going on from a capital perspective, our middle school project certainly, and the continued design work on the CTE project, and of course, both boards had previously met back in the late summer, I believe it was, to hear that, that update on the CTE project. And of course, we are monitoring state budgetary revenue outlooks, and we thought it would be a very good opportunity for an informational meeting with both boards. We know we have a lot going on, and of course, at our last month's board meeting, our board said, yeah, this, this will be a good idea for our two boards to collectively get together this evening, and I think Dr. Sears has most of the agenda this evening, and to provide some informational updates, so I will, Mr. Chairman, if it's your pleasure, I will defer to, to our school, Chair, Mr. Chair Worley, or Superintendent, Dr. Kevin Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlow, and thank you all for hosting the meeting this evening. I think it's a good opportunity to get both boards together and talk through some of the issues that we're going to be looking at as we get into this budget season. Also, I'd like to welcome Ms. Slocum and Mr. Agee, this is their first official board meeting. We haven't had a meeting yet in January, so thank you for deciding to be part of Franklin County Public Schools. The first item that we're going to present about is the middle school project update, and Mr. Spencer is here to talk about that and the CTE project update.
Good evening, members of the board. As you're aware, we have started the middle school project, it's underway now. Also, as far as the renovations at the middle school, we can't forget about the roof replacement in the west building. Here, back in August, is actually when the work really got started and going, once we got contracts taken care of and got underway. Here's some directional board that was started for the modular units. Here is a new six-inch fire main that comes off trail drive going up to the west middle school, because we had to add a new sprinkler system to the west building. The east building is already sprinkled, but west was not. So as far as these renovations, we'll be adding sprinklers to the west building. Here's the utilities being installed for the two mobile units. As you see the picture on the right, all this is going on while school is in session, so that keeps it interesting. Here are the two site pads are being prepared for the mobile units. The mobile units arriving, each, there are two mobile units, but seven units make up each unit, so it's a total of 14 units. There are six classrooms in each unit for a total of 12 classrooms. Here is one of the units, after it's completely set, installed with the decks and ramps. Here's the second unit that's set in place with the decks and ramps as well. Once again, let me go back, you may notice that one is tan, this one is gray, that's by design to help students to, if they need to go to a certain unit, to be able to get them headed in the right direction. Here is a typical classroom in, inside, as you see our maintenance and custodial staff prepping the floors, and then you can see what the floors look like once they get through. Additional work, we've been focused on getting the mobile units ready, but additional work has been going on as well. Here's one of two chiller pads being installed for the two new chillers. On the right is F and R, there to test the concrete. Here are some of the old equipment being removed. On the left is the cooling tower from east, and on the right is the actual chiller from the east building. On the left is flow test, that VSC done on the fire main, to be able to design the sprinkler system for west. On the right, it's kind of hard to see, but the gray right here, structural steel's being added above the ceiling for new rooftop units that are going in. This coming summer, this summer is a big summer for the project. On the left is the chiller in the west building, and the right is the main switchboard for the west building. All of that has to be removed, and the new equipment put in place and operational for the start of school. That's a major task coming up this summer. And here, I just wanted to show, this is some of our phasing drawings, as you see, this is, we're starting in east, lower level. Hopefully, we'll be able to start in the next couple of weeks. We actually today got power installed on the two mobile units. Now, we have to test everything out, fire alarm, data, any power issues, intercom, all the systems that go with the, with the mobile units, to be sure they're ready for students when we move them in. Here's the upstairs in east. Let me go back just a second. And let me say this with a big question mark. On paper, we intend to be through with east building by the end of December of '24, that's our plan. Then we'll move to the west building, that's what we're working towards. Here's the phasing plan for the west building. As you see, and also in these phases, we have to move all the furniture out, have the rooms completely vacant for the contractor. The furniture has to move backwards in force between storage and the mobile units, so it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work as well. The west roof, we're anticipating bidding it later in '24. We want to see where we are as we get into the year with the east building, because the west roof replacement has to follow the construction of the west renovations. So we don't want to bid it too early, but yet, we don't want to bid it too late either, so we'll, we'll monitor that as it, as we go throughout the year. And, yeah, any questions on the middle school renovations?
Daryl, I know I asked you one time, and it's hard to say, but as we're looking right now, we're, we're tracking at a good pace in terms of our timetable, correct?
We are.
Right now.
Yes.
And I know that's subject to change at any given moment for a lot of different reasons.
Yes.
But right now, we seem to be on pace with the timeline that we had presented earlier with this project.
That is correct. Currently, the completion date for the entire project is May of '26, and even as, as early as we are into the project, we've had to do some creative work on some supply issues, so, but right now, I think we're, we're still looking good, nothing, no concerns at this time.
Great, thank you.
Daryl, if I may.
Yes.
The number of students that will be housed in the temporary units.
Yes.
Are your classroom ratios good for the containment that's, in the space that's allowed within those units?
All right, let me say this, there are, in both buildings, between both buildings combined, east and west, there are maybe two, maybe three classrooms that are even close to being as big as the classrooms are in the mobile units. The mobile units are approximately 847 square feet. Typical classroom in both buildings, 750 to 800, so these rooms are much, much larger than the current space they're in.
And you have restrooms in these units?
Absolutely, on each end, and I almost put a picture in there, and I didn't, but on, on the end is, once again, a girls' and boys' restroom that has, I think the girls' has five, six stalls, the boys, I think, has three stalls and a couple urinals.
Are they handicap accessible?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
They are, and as you saw in the earlier pictures, we have the handicap access ramps.
All that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Daryl, when do y'all anticipate, anticipate the students starting to go in those?
I don't, I, I know that answer, but I don't want to say it.
Okay, all right. I respect it.
Let me say this, let me say this, we had intended, and we just, Tuesday, we had a progress meeting. Next weekend, the three-day weekend, we were going to start moving Friday night, and have it finished, ready for the students that Tuesday, when they came back, but we still didn't have power on the mobile units. As I said, just today, we got power, and as of earlier this week, we weren't anticipating power until next week. But now that we have power, if everything checks out good, it'll be soon, but not next week, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because we need to let the staff and everyone there know when it's going to happen.
Thanks, Daryl.
All right. CTE. All right, Dr. Sears asked that I give an update on CTE, so I went back till January of '22, I didn't go back any further, because as you know, we could go way back, okay? So I went back to, I think, the board meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting on January the 18th of '22, that's, I think, when the board approved for us to pick up the project again and move forward to bring, bring some design and pricing back. By no means, I'm not going to go through all these dates, okay? There's a handout that Ms. Burnett will give to you that has these dates that you can take with you and look through. I'll go to the next slide as well, which is additional dates. Those two sheets are on the one sheet of handout. And that's just a timeline of events that's happened since January of '22 concerning the CTE project. Which includes the development of the steering committee, the steering committee meetings, the work with the Mosley Architects to get to where we are now with a, a very high level. If you look at the very last bullet here, this $71 million, that is a very high-level cost estimate. That's based on square footages and limited design of finishes. To get to the next level, we would need to go deeper into the design, which is where we need to pay more to get to. Which, if you go to the second bullet up from the bottom, to really get to a true, more accurate cost estimate, we need to release the architect to get to what they call 65% completion drawings, to be able to get it to their estimators, to get a more detailed and accurate cost, because at that time, it'll have what finishes, what brick, whether if it's drive it, the interior finishes, all of that would be completed at the 65% drawings. So as of now, the architect and his design team are kind of, they're on hold, waiting, you know, for us to, to decide whether if we're moving forward to the next step or not.
And we did submit a construction grant to the Virginia Department of Education in November, and for this project and the HVAC project as well. They don't expect to make a decision on it until their February or March board meetings.
Okay. Here are some slides from Mosley's presentation that you've already seen. Here's where it just shows the location on the property, this is, as you see, what we call the Purdue property, that was purchased by the county for the addition of the Career and Technical Center. As you see, it's on the backside of the campus, next to the track. Here's the, let me, this is the upper level floor plan for Career, for the new CTE building. Here's the lower level. Now, also, what is not shown is there are several, several classes that would go into existing spaces with, already at the high school, that we're not building new space And then there's just a conceptual rendering of potentially what it would look like. And, questions?
Two questions. So on one of the earlier slides, you mentioned getting an estimate from the architectural firm for the 65% solution.
Yes.
Did they give you an estimate?
We have that, yes.
How much is that?
All right, to get to the 65% drawings, in round numbers, I can give you the exact number, but round numbers, it's $1.8 million in design fees to get to 65% drawings.
And then the second question was, when you look at the various modules that you have in there, like agricultural, automotive, you have a pretty good beat on what those will be, is that a pretty final approach to the various educational modules that you'd hope to provide in the center?
Yes, so with that being said, a lot of programming meetings have taken place with the high school staff and with the steering committee, for a part is the size of the spaces, the number of spaces, what would be included in the new structure, and what would be housed in existing spaces on campus.
And is that configuration, is it a pretty typical for a CTE, kind of no matter where it is in the country, or are there really unique features about our CTE because of where it's located?
Both, okay. With that being said, there are some state square footage requirements for career and technical spaces, and these are, at a minimum, are met with us, if not exceeded.
And Mr. Spencer, if I could add, some of that space is designed to be flexible, to accommodate the unknowns or changes in programs, to meet future needs.
Yeah, that is correct, thank you.
Daryl, may I ask another question?
Sure.
We just met with the Farm Bureau Board this evening, and I think that our board has expressed a strong desire to have a robust ag component to the CTE program. Refresh my memory as to whether we're going to have outdoor design space for the ag program.
Yes, on, on the lower level, as you're looking to the right-hand side, you can actually, you see the two horses standing there? Right here, yes, that's right outside, you see, right here is the ag area, which was going to include some of this green space and spaces, this parking lot was designed to be able for truckers to come in for livestock.
I can tell you the Farm Bureau, folks are very excited and want to be part of this journey, so that was very encouraging for us to hear.
Good.
And Mr. Spencer, the design also allows us to take advantage of the field space for additional agricultural.
That is correct, yes. From a grading standpoint, as you, you see here how the grade drops off significantly, it's a matter of how much additional grading you would want to do beyond what would be required for the structure.
Thank you, Daryl.
Daryl, I have a question, I know that's sort of a whole, what sort of earthmoving is going to occur there to make a level pad, and how far?
Okay.
Or does that drop?
All right. All right, which you can't see in the picture, okay? All right, let me, let me go back here, right here. Currently, as it's designed, okay, the field would come from this, this right here is a high spot on the property, this right here would actually get, it's a balanced site, so no dirt would go off or be brought in, so it would be a balanced grading site, and this area here, any earth that would need, would be needed, would come from here and brought over to here, and this would be flattened for whatever you would like to use it for in the future.
I have another question.
Yes.
So you got the estimate from Mosley to get to the 65% solution, that's $1.8 million. Before you move forward with that, would you get other bids from other architectural firms that could get you to the 65% solution?
All right, to do that, we would need to start over, and, and when I say start over, start completely over. Because we went through the RFP process to select Mosley, and this is their design to get to this point, and to go to another design firm, we'd be starting over.
But wouldn't you have all their design documents, it would be, it's, it's a deliverable to you that you could then hand off to another firm to take it that next step?
All right, we've run into this before to a degree, okay? Somewhat, this is proprietary, and even if we hand this off to another firm, they will not use it unless they start over, because they want, that, they do not want to base their design or fees off of another firm's work.
One more question.
Yes.
Maybe for Dr. Sears, the grant money, what do you think you could possibly get grant-wise for this?
With the current LCI, we would be eligible, I think, to receive up to 20% of the total project cost. With the new LCI that is coming in place, we would only be eligible for 10%. I'm not sure where this grant application would fall on that spectrum, so 10 to 20% if we get anything. You know, they did want projects that, that the drawings were near completion, you know, those will have priority in, in the, the grant process, and ours, while we're ahead of a lot of other localities that were submitting projects, we aren't anywhere near having complete drawings either, so that, that could play into their decision if they have a lot of applications for the, the construction grants. We feel really good about the HVAC grant, getting something on it. I think the, the construction grant on this is really going to be dependent on all the other applications that are coming in too.
Well, Dr. Sears, did the grant criteria articulate whether there would have to be a shovel-ready project articulated to rise to the top of the list?
Not shovel-ready, but, and Mr. Terry and I were on the call with them, was it 90% that they were given priority to? If you had drawings and plans, you know, that were 90% complete, those would be given top priority.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is the design, how far out, as far as future growth, do you figure the design is going to take care of?
Once again, in the programming that was done, it does have some growth accounted for, and also, as Ms. McCray mentioned, there are some additional flex spaces that are included in the structure as well, for growth.
Any projection, I mean, we're talking five years, ten years, anything like that?
Yeah, that's beyond me, that one is, yeah.
I think it'll, it'll be determined on, you know, new, new types of programs we want to offer, you know, some that may phase out, and some that, you know, we, if, I know a lot of students are showing more interest in like HVAC and welding, things like that, I think we prepared some of that flex space to accommodate more of those. So, you know, it was designed, when we say flexible, I think really to adjust and adapt to what we feel like are the, the current needs. So I think it's future-proof for quite a while, and I, I think it'll be up to us to keep up with the current trends, like cybersecurity, things like that, and then I think we can adapt our space accordingly. So I, I think there's plenty of room there for us to have legs when it comes to these programs that we want to offer. We've, a lot of times, we've needed the space, I mean, that is, has been one of the biggest hindrances up to this point.
Yeah, we're limited with our current space in how many students can be in these programs. We don't get to maximize every program, because we don't have the required square footage for, to meet OSHA standards.
And I think for the benefit of two of our new supervisors, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but the SOQs articulate with specificity, classroom size, and so forth, curriculum and so forth, so there is state legislative guidance through the SOQs to what's built, is that correct? Am I stating that correctly?
For new school construction, yes, there would be square footage requirements that, that the new building would meet. Now, if you're in an old building that was built before those guidelines were put in place, you're grandfathered in typically. those guidelines were put in place, you're grandfathered in typically. But it still doesn't get you past the OSHA requirements to be able to have 20 students in a program as opposed to 12.
And same thing for program-specific requirements for the state.
I have another one.
Yes.
So what was the cost for the first bit of engineering work that you already paid?
It was, and once again, albeit close. It was roughly $165,000, Mr. Terry. It's somewhere in that neighborhood for the design study to get us to this point.
And what would you guess it would be to go from 65% to 100% if you?
I have that number as well.
Okay.
Excuse me one second, I'll tell you exactly.
While he's looking up numbers, I'll say that one thing has been consistent with the talks about this project for the years that we've been talking about it. It's gotten more expensive every year. And, you know, I think we've all agreed how important it is. And I know there's nothing wrong with the diligence of trying to find out where the money's coming from. But as we continue to agree, you know, it does bear remembering that the cost will continue to go up. I mean, that is, that is etched in gold. It will. So just always remember that as we, and I think we've done our diligence here. The supervisors requested a CTE-only project, which I feel like we've done, on the Purdue property, which I think is the use that was originally intended for it. You know, we had some talks before with the town about a potential project that did not pan. So we, we wanted to take control of this between our boards, and I feel like we have. So I like where we stand. And I think, I think that we all do. We just need to figure out the final steps. Sorry, Darryl.
Oh, you're welcome. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
To, for the additional 35% drawings to get to final bid documents is $643,401. So total design is 2.26 million. But there's other, some other design fees in there as well. There's a shopping list here of how far we, we would like for the architect to go. So if we get to that point, we would need to sit down and go through each line item.
And Darryl, how long would it take to come up with the drawings for the next phase?
Go with me. Approximately 10 months for design and estimated, well, two months for permitting, embidding, and 16 months of construction. So if you add all that up, that's 28 months or so, let's say two and a half years from, from the time the project is actually released to move forward, should everything fall within budget and there's no hiccups in between.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. That was a great update.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, and the final two items pertain to the state budget outlook and the local composite index and the changes that are coming to Franklin County on that funding indicator. Mr. Terry will come up first and talk to us a little bit about the outlook. And then I'll kind of take over and talk about what options the board has to address the LCI change that we're currently making.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I want to preface these remarks by saying that the LCI and SOQ don't get a lot of attention until they have to get attention. And what has transpired recently has certainly drawn it to the forefront. So first of all, I want to basically introduce, what is LCI, the Local Composite Index? The Virginia Constitution requires that the Board of Education formulate standards of quality. You've heard standards of quality, and what is that? That is basically the minimum acceptable educational program that the state will fund in the state of Virginia. So the General Assembly is, as it says here, charged with revising the SOQ, which means any changes that are needed during biennial budgets, determining SOQ costs, which they survey local school divisions for what's called prevailing costs. And then those are rebenchmarked into the SOQ formula every two years at the start of a biennial budget. And then apportioning the cost between the state and the localities. And that is where the Local Composite Index comes in. So the SOQ is established in the Constitution. Most people may not realize that, but it is. And the specific requirements are set out in the Code of Virginia and the Appropriation Acts, which come out every, every time the General Assembly acts on that. And there are always changes to programs and funding that occur with those appropriation acts, and those become part of the SOQ. So state funding must be matched by the locality. We can always spend more than the minimum amount or the required local effort. And we can also offer programs and employ staff beyond what is required, but we have to at least meet the minimum. Of course, Franklin County does more than the minimum to the tune of about $10 to $12 million on average. And the county does very well as far as meeting the required local effort and going forward. I will say that in our budget, a lot of those extra funds do require going to special needs students. So that is certainly one use of those. And SOQ funding is based largely on the J-Lark methodology, which was developed in the mid, late 1980s. So how do you determine state and local shares of SOQ funding? First of all, it is fundamental to the SOQ that that cost sharing occurs. Under the formula, it is considered equalized, the local shares, based on the local ability to pay as determined by the composite index of the local ability to pay. And the composite index then determines what each locality will pay. Now, the composite index for every locality is different because every locality is different as far as real estate values, taxable income, and other, and three major factors, which is the next one. So the composite index uses three indicators of ability to pay, the true value of real property, which is 50% weighted in the formula, the adjusted gross income in the locality, which is weighted 40%, and then taxable retail sales, which is weighted 10%. So I've given a little synopsis here of the information that was provided to us by the Department of Education as to what was some of the major drivers. Obviously, you recall, from 2019 to 2021, after the pandemic, there was significant enrollment loss in the schools to the tune of approximately 580-some students from 65-62 to down to about 59-80-some. So that was a significant driver because that is a numerator when you do per capita for the real estate values. It drives up the value for the per capita per student, which ultimately drives up the local composite index. Also, in the local composite index, also the true value of real property, you'll see at the bottom, that number is adjusted in between assessments. And it is based on the ratio of assessed value to selling price. And as you can see, in 2019, that value was about 95%. So that number is divided into the assessment value. And I'm sorry, that column there says fair market value 2020 assessments. That is solely for the 2021 line. The 2019 line was based on the 2016 assessments. But those numbers then are divided by those to represent what's called the true value of real estate. So that is adjusted by the state to reflect current values. They do add then true value of public service to the totals. And on the far right column, when it says the total true value, 7.7 million in 2019, and that escalated to 10.7 million this year.
Billion.
Billion.
Yes.
Billion.
Billion, I'm sorry. I make that mistake every time. I tell them I'm not a federal employee. I do not deal with billions of dollars, okay?
We don't get to say billion at school.
No, no. But anyway, that, that shows you that the two main drivers, the main driver was, of course, the assessed value to selling price percentage and the ADM drop. Those are the two main drivers of where we're at today. So this is the composite index. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. It's pretty complex. It's really for actuaries to determine, and there's a lot of inputs to go into it. But as you can see, everything is a weighted average going forward, and it's based on the relative importance of those values to the overall calculation of local wealth and local ability to pay. So the, the .5 and the .4 weights are basically for the real estate valuations and the gross income. So it is the relative wealth and the ability to pay that represents 90% of the calculation of the index. So I just received word this afternoon that the Calc tool will probably be released no later than tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have some more firm numbers as to what the impact of this will be. But what we did to get an initial look at it was to take the SOQ funding categories for our FY '24 budget, and then adjust that to the new composite index. And by doing that, your number decreases, I'm sorry, by $2,665,720. The total impact, when you include potential enrollment reductions for next year, and we're not really sure if that number will hold, I'm hopeful that we can probably increase it some realistically. But the total amount then escalated to $3,333,000, which is an additional $667,000 we're attributing now to enrollment loss. So those two factors together constitute the $3.3 million that shortfall that we're looking at in state revenue going forward for next year. That's really the extent of this presentation. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Terry, did Governor Youngkin's budget give us any insight? I haven't looked at, at the school portion yet. Were there any, was there any guidance in terms of what he is seeing or proposing for potential offsets to composite index for localities like ours that are under duress?
I'm not really aware of any, you know, specific initiatives by the governor to do that.
Okay.
But there, you know, there is some significant investments in education, but most of it is targeted to specific programs. And I think there is a continuation of the 2% increase for staff and teachers. That was done the first half of this year, or the second half of this year, going forward into next year, and then another 2% planned for the following year. But of course, we have to certify that we have budgeted those funds in order to qualify for the funding.
I did participate in a Zoom meeting earlier today with the incoming Chair of the House Education Committee and some of the other House delegates, and asked if they would be willing to consider a whole harmless provision for school divisions that experienced a large increase. And they said it was not out of possibility they could do it, but it wasn't on anybody's radar currently. We'll talk about that more in a minute. But, you know, it didn't sound like it was anything that they had been approached about up to this point.
I came into the meeting thinking that the, the real driver was of the assessed value to the true market value. And now that I've heard the presentation and I see the formula, it seems like it's the, the true value of the real estate that's driving this, not, not the difference between assessed and real value. Is that, is that true?
But that percentage, if you see, in 2019, it was 95%, and then it dropped to 72%. When that happens on a higher assessment base in 2021, it magnified the true value of real estate by about 39%.
But, but the, in, it looks like the true value of real estate is, is $10 billion, right? That, that, roughly, that's your number? Yeah, right there.
10.7.
The true value of real estate is?
10.7, yes.
Yeah. And so it seems like that's the real input into the formula, not, it's not really looking at the difference between assessment and true value.
No, no. What you're saying is exactly correct. That number feeds then into this index right there. See, local true value of property in the upper?
Exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
And so the reason I think that's important is if it was based on the difference between assessment and true value, we could be looking, we'd have a better case for relief. If the true input is the market value, that will be harder to argue with, right? It just is what it is, right?
Right.
It seems to me. So you adjusted my opinion with your presentation.
Well, also too, I think that there were some very extenuating circumstances which generated this. And we are certainly not alone in the state. There are other localities that are facing the same thing. And so I think, I think we do have a case for it. Now, whether or not that comes to fruition is.
And Mr. Terry, doesn't timing play a piece of this? We do assessments every four years as opposed to being like on a two-year cycle. We might have caught it sooner and lessened the impact.
Well, your assessed values would then would start to go up, and you'd have less time between the re-benchmarking and the assessed values, and it should, should minimize it more.
If I may, as an example of that specifically, with, with that differential there between the 95% and the 72%, as it's been said, we reassess every four years. And so localities, as an example, and we have some data and so forth that we will distribute, that reassess every year, as an example, then as real estate values with the market and the assessment, since the assessments are done every year and the reassessments are done every year, you don't see that large differential of that 39%. Roanoke County, as an example, their LCI stays pretty level. They're a locality that reassesses every year. In the four-year, again, and an anomaly, I guess, you know, post-pandemic and during the pandemic, the great increases in the market value of property, the state formula is geared, again, to, to capture that. And then those numbers are input into the, in it, you know, then it, I guess, distributes then that, that local composite index number, and there's where we are, is, if that helps in explaining some of that. Four-year reassessment, they do the revow every two years on the LCI, and so we're kind of caught there.
Just as a follow-up to that, Chris, though, if we were to, and I know we discussed this the other night, there's an expense to the county if we step this up. And I know Roanoke County that does it every year, they've got staff on board in-house that do that. They're not contracting it out, so.
That, that's correct, Mr. Carter.
I mean, if we were to, to attempt to change this, we're going to have to really weigh our options. Is it better off for us to, to do it every four years expense-wise or do it every two? And I don't think the county can afford an in-house assessment staff at this time.
Sure. There, there are reassessment calls for those localities. Mr. Carter, that's exactly correct. You know, to do your reassessments every year. Some localities, as we discussed, you know, with the board the other evening, last year, that went through the four-year reassessments, have discussed, you know, going to maybe a two-year reassessment and so forth. For that very reason, not, not so much that, you know, at times on the four years, and the way the market was, we've seen these, these large increases, you know, over the four years. But there also have been times over four years with the Great Recession of about 12 years ago, where there was a large decrease in the assessed values. And so it, it's, it happens. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen about every decade or so that we see this happen with, with real estate. And it's just complex that the LCI, you know, heavily weights, that you saw that 50% on, on property values and so forth as part of that formula, and not so much on a local distress situation, free and reduced lunch percentages and so forth. None of that is in the LCI. And so, you know, some would argue that's really not a locality's true ability to pay because it doesn't necessarily capture the whole economic picture of a locality. So.
I know the J-Larks, I'm sorry, I know the J-Lark study was recommending that the state go to three versus two years to try to do some of the things by exercise that reassessments do on a local level.
But to Dan's point, whether you're doing it every two years or every four years, we're going to be at the same point regardless.
Exactly.
Right.
To Dan's point, whether we're doing it, and, and. To Dan's point, whether we're doing it and and everybody's been talking for years what real estate's been doing, everybody's been knowing it. I had no idea what the LCI index was until Chris sent an email about it a few months ago. But this, this has been coming, and everybody knew it, whether we wanted to admit it or not. And to Dan's point, regardless of when we're doing it, by doing it every four years, you might save on one end, and then on the next end, you're going to lose. You're only losing in on this one. And whether we did an assessment two years ago or not, we'd still be to this point.
The J-Lark report actually points out that the LCI formula is actually pretty, pretty good, pretty robust. It's the SOQ formulas that they're recommending. That's a staffing, really a staffing formula. It's it's a numbers-driven as opposed to a needs-based formula. And so they're recommending, you know, that we look more at, or that the state looks more at needs-based assessments in the SOQ formulas, which I think I wholeheartedly support and would help us.
Yes, sir.
Because I see the real challenge with this formula is the true value went from 7.5 billion to 10.5 billion. That's a 33% increase. And the formula is is assuming that you could raise your taxes to your constituents by 33%, which we we couldn't and wouldn't and would never do, right? And so it's assuming you suddenly have a lot more money because you raised your taxes that much, and you didn't.
And the formula is designed specifically to force localities to do that as values increase and to allow the state flexibility, so.
I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I get to talk about the fun stuff. You know, basically, we have two options to move forward. First is easy for us, we ask you all for the money. And and assuming that can't happen or can't happen in full, then we have to look at where can we cut our budget to to make up whatever the difference will be. And we don't have a, there aren't many options that we can do budget cuts on a large scale other than the ones we're going to talk about here. First, combine the elementary bus routes with the secondary bus routes. This means we would, we currently run completely separate buses, completely separate routes at different times. We would combine and put pre-K through 12th grade students on the same buses and and run the the routes that way. It would allow us to reduce the number of the buses on the road and decrease the total number of miles driven each year, therefore decreasing the fuel consumption of our buses. A very high-level estimation of what that would save us, about a million dollars a year if we went that route. Some of the questions that the board will have to consider, i- if this is the way, one of the steps that we take to meet the budget shortfall, you know, how's this going to impact bus discipline? How will our parents react when their pre-K students now put on a bus with an 18-year-old? And how's this going to impact route times for drivers? If a driver just had an elementary run, they may be running a 30, 40-minute route, and now they're going to be taking students to the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. So a- all of that will have to be worked out. And and like I say, the 1 million is a very generalized estimate. It could be a little more, it could be a little less, but that's what we would be working off of for that. Another step that the board could take would be to consolidate one to three elementary schools, redraw the attendance zones, reassign students to their new schools, and transfer staff. The estimated savings on that is about a million dollars per school. The questions and issues that we have there are the timeframe constraints where, you know, ideally, if you're going to start talking school consolidation, you want to start that in the fall and spend the year working out the plans and vetting it and getting parental input and and working all of that out. Not saying that it can't be done in this shortened timeframe, but, you know, there would probably be things get overlooked, and it would be very difficult for the board to to go through all the usual steps to to have a school consolidation where you get community input and community buy-in like you would want. We don't want to, your, one of the concerns would be creating a large-scale exodus of employees once specific discussions begin. If we start talking about one elementary school possibly closing down and name that elementary school, the teachers, you know, out of self-preservation are going to start thinking, where am I going to work? What am I going to do next year? I like it here. I've been here my whole career. You know, it might be, if I'm going to have to make a change anyway, I may as well go to Roanoke or Henry County or Floyd County if I live closer in that direction. So that would be a concern that we would have. And the impact on enrollment, if families decide, well, my student's going to have to change schools and ride buses for a longer period of time, I'll just homeschool them. I don't want to to put them through that. So these are all questions that we would have to ask ourselves as we look at these two steps. And then the third step is implementing a reduction in force. And the way we would do that, you know, it, once we reduce transportation routes and once we reduce elementary schools, you know, we would cut positions for anyone who didn't have a transferred destination. A lot of our employees would be able to be transferred to the new school because we're going to have to have additional employees there, but not every employee would have to be transferred. There would be the potential there to to cut employees if we did not have a place for them to land. And, of course, the questions that we have to face then is what would be the timeframe to ensure that those who are losing their positions can be considered for positions in neighboring counties? Hiring season starts a little earlier every year. It used to be you didn't worry about interviewing teachers to April or May. Now job fairs are in January. So if if we are going to do this and cut positions and do a riff through consolidation and eliminating the bus routes and other things, we need to do it in a way that allows the people who aren't going to have a job to apply for jobs elsewhere. It's not fair to them to make them wait till, you know, June and then say, oh, by the way, you don't have a job, even though legally we can. We have until June 15th to notify them. It's not fair to those people to let them think they're going to have a job right up till the time they're about ready to come back for school, and then we tell them the job's been cut. So we would want to do it in a way that that allows them to continue to provide for their families. And the other issue is what would the impact be on our ability to serve students? We're going to be looking at increased class sizes. We're going to be looking at a reduction in some of the specials courses or time that they spend in specials courses when we create, you know, larger elementary schools that might have 45 minutes of PE every day. This might cut it down to 30 minutes of PE every day. So the, which means that teacher planning times are reduced and, you know, student time getting to go be active could be reduced as well. So there are a lot of unknown variables there that we're going to have to take into consideration once the board decides which of these steps they want to implement to address the funding shortage. So I just have a few summit of points on the steps that the board would have to consider. First is reducing the number of work locations, i.e., school bus, schools and buses is the only way that we can reduce employees without creating major deficits in educational programs. We can't just go through and and cut positions from every school. We have to do it in a way that allows us to still meet all the standards of quality, to make sure every student has a counselor, to make sure that every student has an opportunity to take PE and music and art. All these things are required of us, so we can't just go through and and start cutting positions. We have to try to do it in a way that still allows us to serve students in all the areas that we're required to serve them. The steps that are mentioned in this presentation are the only large-scale ones available to the school board. We can nickel and dime in other areas and probably come up with a half million dollars, but when we start talking 1, 2, 3 million dollars, we can't do that without some of these large-scale things, large-scale steps that have to be considered. And because of the time constraints and legal requirements for notices, the school board will likely have to decide to move forward with some of, some combination of these steps before we even know what our actual budget is going to be next year. It goes back to what I was talking about earlier of notifying teachers that they may not have a job next year so they can apply for and be considered for positions, you know, in neighboring divisions. There are some stopgap funding measures that could get us through FY25 using carryover i- if additional county funds are available. And Mr. Terry could probably speak in more detail about that. We know we have some carryover money this year that with, you know, working with the board of supervisors, we could possibly apply toward next year. It's not enough to meet the the expected gap of 3.3 million, but it might be enough to keep from shutting down an extra school for next year. Maybe two schools instead of three would be shut down if that's the route that we have to go. And we may want to conduct some joint advocacy for our legislators to do a hold harmless provision, which I talked about earlier. You know, I planted the idea with a question today at the VSBA webinar with Delegate Russell, who will be the the Chair of the Education Committee along with Delegate O'Quinn from Washington County. And I can't remember the other delegate's name who was part of that, but she's from down around Norfolk. So anyway, they at least, there are at least three members of the General Assembly now who've heard that that might be coming, that there might be some advocacy from localities that are experiencing this type of increase in their LCI. And I reached out to Dr. Coons, the State Superintendent, regarding the, our increase in LCI, and she said there were several divisions. There aren't many rural divisions that are experiencing it, but Floyd County is. I contacted Keith Paragin, Superintendent of Washington County, who's also the Chair of the Small and Rural Schools Coalition, and and he did a little background look, check on it, and he said Floyd County is probably the closest one to us that is experiencing something similar. And their LCI didn't increase at the same level that ours did, but proportionally, it's having about the same impact on their budget. I think it's probably going to be about a $1.2 million cut for them in state funding. So, you know, they're, they're going to be having some of these same conversations, I imagine, in the next few weeks. So, you know, there's an opportunity for us to maybe partner with some other localities that are, I think Richmond City is dealing with it, and some of the larger school divisions in Northern Virginia. Clark County is one that is dealing with it. So there might be the opportunity to do some joint legislative advocacy, to do a hold harmless provision, to give divisions that are, you know, having this type of swing, give us a year or so to try to work something out because trying to to make these drastic cuts in, you know, a few short months is going to really be a difficult thing for school boards and school administrators and teachers to, and support staff to try to work through. Because while all this is going on, we also still have to continue serving students and make sure that they're getting ready for their SOLs and and still address the school security concerns with some of the things that we have going on. So there's a whole lot going on, and to add, you know, the the responsibility of working through consolidations and elimination of services while you're trying to teach kids and get to the end of the school year, it's going to make an already stressful job just about unbearable for a lot of our employees. Any questions or comments about the the steps that that we would have to consider?
Dr. Sears, it seems to me of the options that you have articulated that my concern is that we're dealing with a three- to four-month time period in which both boards are going to be adopting budgets. Is it an assumption, a good assumption to say that to properly do those things on a three-month time schedule, if one or two were chosen, that there's just no possibility to reasonably do it well and thoroughly in that compressed timeframe? And I would even go as far as to suggest getting the legislators to act on this in the near term is just not going to happen.
Yes. You know, from the last couple of years, the budgets haven't even been voted on until June and July, and there's no way we can wait that long. And to answer your question, I think it's a very fair statement to say that it, we we can do it, but we're not going to be able to do as good a job of of getting the buy-in and and making a the, a solid plan as we would if we have a whole year to vet the process and go through it. And that's why I mentioned the stopgap measures. I, I mean, ideally, we would find some way to offset this and be able to move forward business as usual because we, we provide a lot of good services for our students and we have a very good school division. You know, there's no way to to make these cuts that won't impact student learning, student safety, student security. All of these things will will have to suffer to some degree when you start making, you know, talking about cuts of, you know, 3.5 million dollars.
Can I just have one more question? Your facility study, is there any redundancy in your options you've presented with suggestions in your facility study?
I don't think I understand that question.
Are there things in your facility study results that some of these options represent things that you all were going to be considering anyway?
There were recommendations in the facility study. We had not moved forward with considering them, but I mean, at some point, they they probably would have been discussed. It's just we, you know, thought we might have years to work through that as opposed to three months.
Thank you.
They would have been discussed.
Yeah.
They, they were impending. This has hastened it substantially.
Thank you, Chairman Hawley.
And I, do, oh, do you know the total, if you take all the elementary schools together, do you know the total capacity, your serving capacity for the elementary schools? Like, that's one question. Then do you know of what percent of that total capacity you're serving today?
I know that Liam Wade and Rocky Mount are near capacity. The other elementary schools in the county, there is capacity to take in additional students. And now, we have it in the facility study that was done. I don't know them, know them off the top of my head, but we do have those data.
I was just going to add, bear in mind the learning loss coming off of COVID that's reflected in our numbers. So this type of change would be even further disruptive for that. I mean, we're just now trying to put plans in place to close that learning loss as it is.
Dr. Sears, what's the approximate carryover amount? Do you know?
Mr. Terry?
Well, it's about 3.5 billion, but 2.4 of that used to go for the middle school project as part of the state entitlement grant for school construction. So the unencumbered would be a little bit, a little less than 1.2.
Okay, thank you. Am I incorrect if I'm wrong?
No, 3.5 is correct. Now, I'll lend to Mr. Terry on the the already obligated funds, but 3.5 million is correct for the county side as well.
What's the average enrollment of the elementary schools across the board?
You know, I'm thinking it's probably around 230, 240, but don't hold me to that. I, I know Liam Wade is quite a bit more than that, and we have some that are below that.
Yeah. Liam Wade is over 400 now, is by far the most populous, and there's no room for expansion there. I mean, it sits on rock. You can't put a mobile unit, you can't do anything. You know, I think as you get out into some of the community schools and on the outlier of the of the county, some of those enrollments drop to the 140 and 150 range. It's, it's odd the way that our enrollments are, you know, it, it is, and if, I know some of the board of supervisors members will remember, they had to redistrict a couple of our magisterial districts during this last voting cycle due to population loss. And some of our schools sort of trended that way. I mean, we saw it in a couple of districts. So, you know, but the facility study also is, it addresses capacity that where some of these lower enrollment schools aren't necessarily the ones that you may look at like you might think because they're closer to capacity than another school. And it's hard to understand until you really dive into it.
Or look at the maps for where geographically where you could potentially move.
Right. But it's, it really is, the Rocky Mount schools are by far the most populous. That's, and it sort of skews everything else, truly.
The majority of the schools are in that 230 to 270, the, most of the, about over half the elementary schools. The other thing that we've got, the situation is, coming into the county new, I was looking at middle school data yesterday, we've got some fluctuation years, which is really weird. So, for example, if you think about the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we've got like 490 in eighth grade, but then there's like a 60 kid drop the next year. So there's like 425 in seventh grade. So we've got some years, if you look holistically from K-12, where we've got some low year- where we've got some low years where the group coming in did not match the group that was going out. And then the next year, it'll go back up and we'll have a large group coming back in the next year. So we never sort of know until we get to that kindergarten registration. But we've got a couple of years, K-12 and the division, that are significantly lower than the other grade levels.
Well, and, and it's a bad situation however you look at it. And out of everything we see, I'm, I'm not saying we take anything off the table. But out of the things I read, my, my first born child will start kindergarten in the fall and I will not put him on a school bus with high school and middle school age kids. It will not happen. I rode the school bus my whole tenure through Franklin County schools, but that would be a no option for me.
Well, we, we, listen, we don't like any of these options either, okay? I mean, but what we're trying to explain to you is this, what, this is what we're facing as a board. Okay? And short of having funding, this is what we're going to have to do.
Eighty-five percent of the budget is tied to compensation. So we don't have a lot of room to work with operationally. I mean, technically, if you look at Franklin County from a staffing standpoint and the programs that we offer, we're, we're underfunded. We're understaffed compared to some of the other localities. And, you know, some of the other J-Lock reports point to that. So we've cut where we can. These are by no means, not what we want to do, just.
I, I understand, and that's probably, that's more me of a, as a parent.
No, hey, we get it.
I guarantee you, you wouldn't be the first one to come yell at us when we did it.
I'm not going to yell because I understand, we, I understand this has to be worked out and money doesn't grow on trees and I'm the, you know, we have to decide where the money comes from and I'm glad we're here collectively to talk about it.
Well, and, and, and please know that we aren't throwing these options out as any kind of threat or any kind of like, we're not trying to bully or blackmail y'all to thinking that we're holding you over the fire. That is not the case at all. These are options that we have always had to think about when we look at large scale cuts because A D M has dropped. We understand that. We're, we're trying to be pragmatic about it, but we are being rushed now. And, and these are the things, like Dr. Sears said, that are big ticket, that are the only way to address these, the, the big ticket loss. And they, they will hurt. They will hurt and we'll all feel it.
I was going to be, I was going to add that, everybody's going to feel it.
And I can, I can speak, I, I drove for the county for 18 years and I understand your sentiment. I drove with, with pre-K through 12 for a period of a couple of years. And the discipline issues are an issue, are a big problem. We haven't discussed this, but I think that we would have to consider whether we put an adult monitor on the buses that would, would handle discipline because the bus driver cannot do that and do her job properly. Or he or she. So these are things we haven't gotten, you know, we haven't dug deep, but we've got to consider those things if that's.
This is the first time our board is really disgusted.
And that was me going through that list of things and just picking one that is a, that is a no-go for me.
Yeah, and it, and I agree exactly with what Ms. Greer is saying. Ideally, we would want another adult on that bus if we were going to do this, but that also reduces the cost savings of going this way because we're increasing personnel on the bus. So, you know, that, that, all that would have to be worked out and, and we would have to try to strike a balance. I, I've been working today on, on a draft email to all of our faculty and staff because I know, you know, now that we're publicly discussing what our steps would have to be to address this budget shortfall, I don't want people to get into a panic because we are still incredibly early in this process. We don't even have the governor's, the calculation tool on the governor's budget yet. And that's really just the starting point for the conversation. And so I don't want people to start applying elsewhere, you know, next week because of this. And that, that's my fear. And, and I'm trying to, in the correspondence, I'm working on to everyone, to all of our faculty and staff, I'm trying to hit home on the points. One, this is nobody's fault. This is, we are subject to a flawed formula that nobody likes. Everybody wants to change and nobody can figure out how to do it. It's just hit us, you know, hard this go around. This hit other localities hard in the past, but it, this is the hardest it's ever hit Franklin County. So, but that's nobody's fault. Give us a few weeks to talk, to try to figure out what options we have, to reach out to legislators and, and see if there is the opportunity to work a hold harmless provision. And, you know, and whatever decisions the board makes, you know, they're going to be done in public. We're not going to have a secret meeting to decide, you know, where to close down schools and what positions to eliminate without having public input and going through that process because we'll have to get, have that type of buy-in. So I don't want people to think that we're making backroom deals or backroom decisions. It, it will all be very transparent, very open. But also, we're not in panic mode yet. We're concerned and we're looking at our options and we're exploring what each of those options would mean for our budget. But we're not in panic mode because there are still a whole lot of variables out there that could come in and impact this one way or another.
Dr. Sears, if I may defer to Chairman Worley for a question, would the school board consider usage of your carryover as we think in the mode of stopgap measures? Are you all in a position to consider your carryover, understanding that it's not going to meet the 3.2, 3.3?
I mean, certainly. I mean, that's, you know, that's a board discussion, but I can't imagine that we wouldn't be amenable. You know, I think good practice has always been not to use carryover for, for your operating. I think we all know that. But I think these circumstances warrant something a little bit different.
But your carryover is your operating carryover, right?
We typically ask for it for capital improvement.
But just by exercising function?
True, but, but we've always asked for it in terms of a capital improvement or a one-time spending was my point. I, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to misunderstand. But that's a board decision, but I think that's worth a discussion. I, I think anything that could defray some of the things that we're talking about perhaps is a good option.
Well, as Mr. Mitchell has articulated his opinion on one of the options, I'm not at all.
Wasn't real clear on what he thought.
Well, I, I'm just not at all comfortable in trying to do something that's that significant. All of those things are significant.
Well, and.
And doing it in a very compressed time period is patently unfair to the parents and the children in Franklin County.
Well, and, and so, in certain terms of consolidating schools, there's a legal process.
I understand.
And we don't want to trip up on ourselves if we had to rush into that. And I know Mr. Overstreet has been through that process before in a different division. You know, it, it, there is a process. And it's not as simple as just, you know, telling parents in three months, your school's going to be gone. I mean, we have to do certain things by law. And with transportation, the, the transportation pressures in this county are real. I mean, we are the largest, I think, county west of Richmond geographically to try to transport children. I don't know that our transportation department could figure out the routes in three or four months. It's massive.
Well, that's, I worry fundamentally about the options for that reason. I will just want to go on the record about that. The other question that I have is regarding vacancy savings. We've got your carryover number, we know what that is. Is there any projection of vacancy savings during this school calendar year that could be quantifiable before July 1st?
I would defer to Mr. Terry on that, but I know from previous experience, nobody ever wants to project savings in January because there are just so many.
No, but if you, if you've got static open positions.
I mean, I, I would think we could probably look at what historically the carryover amount has been and, and come up with, you know, it, it'll probably be at least this amount based on the fact that this was the lowest amount we've had in the last 10 years. But it, it's, it's very difficult to say at this point. We, we could have a major, you know, a, a cooler go out, a, a cooling tower go out at a school that'll, you know, cost $300,000 and, and that wipes away what our carryover would have been. It's, I, I don't think we could count on that. What we could count on is what the carryover from last year that we know is there. And then at the end of the year, we could evaluate it to see what type of carryover we might have and, and how it might be applied.
Thank you.
So if you took the carryover out of this, what, you did a shortfall of 2.3 million roughly?
Yes. 2.1 probably. You know, and once we get the, the cap over and know what the exact amount is, these conversations, you know, will become more meaningful because we'll be working off real numbers. And the, the 3.3 is our projection based on this year's budget. It's not factoring in the re-benchmarking and some of the things that are, are at play in the new budget calculation, which it, it may not be to our favor. It might very well be a 3.5 million when all said and done, or it could be down to a 2.5 million. We just don't know yet. But hopefully, if what Mr. Terry said is true, we may know by the end of the day tomorrow what the actual amount is that we're going to be working from during this budget season.
I was thinking before coming in that this was maybe a temporary situation, but it seems like it's more of a permanent shortfall that we'll have. So if, if you see, if the property values stay the same, 10, 10.5 billion, then the next year we'll get 3.3 less and the next year it'd be 3.3. So that, that's not going to suddenly go back to where it was, right? If the property values stay exactly the same, then the shortfall is pretty much the same.
The L C I will be the same for the next two years. So that the 3.3 less, yeah, would be the same for the next two years. You know, there, there is a, probably a pretty good chance that we're going to see the L C I increase again for the 27, 28. Is that the correct year? We're doing, we're now talking 25, 26. So yes, the 27, 28 biennium, we're probably going to see another increase. Hopefully, it won't be six full points like we're experiencing now, but it, it probably will increase again.
I would have to say in the future, I, I hope that we, we, I will certainly pay closer attention to this, but it's, it's forecasted better than to give us a couple of months to come up with a solution to this. But I, I can't speak for everyone, but the, um, between carryover funds and, and whatever we have to come together to do, this isn't something that needs to happen in the middle of a school year. This needs to happen over a summer.
Yeah.
Regardless of what, I don't care what change on that list it is, we can't just do that. It seems like awful short time to come up with such huge ideas.
It's incredibly short timeframe to, to work out plans for those types of cuts, yes.
Well, what the state is saying is that y'all need to pay for it. I mean, that, that's what they're saying. They're not asking us to make cuts, they're asking y'all to give more funding, so.
Of course they are.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying it to be flippant, but that's by design what they just came up with, is that y'all have the ability to pay more, do it. So they aren't worried about our cuts. I mean, they're not worried about, and I don't mean to be Debbie Downer here, but they're not worried about Little Franklin County and the fact that, you know, our L C I went up six points. I, I'm not counting on the state. I don't think we can. I wish we could. And I don't mean to be blunt.
No, the, the formula favors urban localities. I think what you're going to start seeing is, you know, a need for rural communities to start advocating specifically for rural needs because I don't see Loudoun County stepping up going, yes, let's change the formula because it's actually benefiting them because it's a volume-based formula.
I do think because of the J-Lark study, the General Assembly is going to take up a closer look at the funding formula this year and the S O Qs and how that impacts it. And at least that was my feeling after the webinar today with the, the three members of the House that were part of it. All of them seemed to want to, to work on this and trying to come up with a, a more equitable based on locality and based on the needs of that locality funding formula than what we currently have in place.
Because you guys could continue to lose some aid funding relative to A D M if your A D M numbers, I don't know what you're projecting in March, but if those numbers are projected to come down, you're looking at further loss.
Yes, and that, that's something we deal with every year, as does almost every school division in the state. You know, and, and you make adjustments here and there to try to offset that as much as you can. But when you start having, you know, 100 students, 200 students a year, that, that becomes another challenge in and of itself. Fortunately, you know, our A D M this year is actually a little higher than what we had budgeted for. So that we have a little bit of cushion that we're enjoying now, but that doesn't mean it'll be the same next year. You know, we're subject to a declining birth rate throughout the state. And so what Mr. Overstreet was talking about earlier, we are graduating larger cohorts than we're getting in and that's playing a, a large part in the, the, the difference in the A D M too.
And to your point earlier, Ms. Smith, getting through the legislative cycle, I mean, you've got all these new members, the likelihood they would take up something and turn something around is not likely. It'll probably drive through committee, if anything, that would go out for study and review. The, I mean, you, we wouldn't see the impact of that this year.
Well, we would have to lean seriously on our local legislators in a, in a very aggressive way.
We, uh, we had a meeting with Delegate Alec Davis, I think within about three days of this coming to our attention. We took him to lunch at an elementary school and we had a good sit-down with him. He seemed very interested in, in discussing it. Of course, it, like to all of us, it was a lot of learning and a lot to, to try to take in. But we tried to press upon him how much this hurts the locality and he needs to take that with him to Richmond. And we didn't get a chance to talk to Senator Stanley. I don't know if anybody has yet or not. But we plan on making him aware, if he's not already as well, that this is a, a really hard local issue.
I can say the same for our, I know that we're planning on having a serious discussion. Mr. Whitlow's going to facilitate. I will say that, excuse, Carletta and I are going to the Capitol Conference and we'll be meeting with our legislators. So if there's any, any of you that have questions you want us to take with us, we'll be glad to do that.
Looking down the road in the future, you was talking about if the possibility of shutting down a school, elementary school, would it be possible? I know we've got a problem with our C S A, it's a huge hit on us big time. If you shut one down, you're going to have a staffing problem too. Does the staffing, could that be combined into the C S A program to help the county?
Yeah, that, that is something that we have discussed, the possibility of trying to develop a program here in the county that would allow us to serve the students who are being transported out of the county for those programs now. I think that probably has to be a separate conversation because that's not going to be a budget savings for the school division. It would be a budget savings for the, the C S A. You know, we're going to have to figure out how to pay the people to serve those students. And, you know, about half of the estimated cost savings that we would recognize from closing down these schools is because that school would no longer be in operation. So you're not paying for water and gas and electricity. And if we keep it in use, then that part of the budget savings would not be recognized either. But it, it is a need and it's something that we definitely want to, to have in place here in the county. I don't think we can have that as part of the conversation for a budget cut though. It, it would have to be a separate one.
Think about for the future, down the road, somewhere along the line, it could be a savings.
Yeah.
Lemon's make lemonade.
Yeah, it, it's a great suggestion and it is something we have toyed with in, you know, just looking at all the space available in the county, where might be a good location to, to put a program that would allow us to bring a lot of these students back into the county.
And Mr. Jamison, I know at one point there was, when we had talked about developing C T and building that project on the Purdue property, the West Campus, the one across the street that you have to cross, that was potentially idealized into a day placement potentially. So, you know, we have talked about that. We know what the cost savings would be to the county. We know C S A, just like our discussions with C T, it goes up all the time. It's not going anywhere. And we do think there'd be some good savings. And we want to keep those kids here. I mean, we want to serve them here. We think it's better for them. We'd love to bring them back. And that's an ongoing conversation, I think, that we continue to have.
We currently don't have a high school G E D program currently for those students as well. And we have adult ed programs, which could also be incorporated into that same type of facility. So we could have those students here during the day, but we could also have that facility being used for like evening classes for adult ed and things like that. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities to have that type of facility here in this division.
The conversation they had today, if there are any changes made to the formula, we would probably be looking at at least four years, but it, before it would begin to be implemented. So the issues that we're dealing with are the issues we're going to have to deal with for the upcoming biennium and most likely the one after that, if they make any changes.
I know for, that we're just throwing out hypotheticals and.
I know for, uh, that we're just throwing out hypotheticals and trying to figure that's what this is, but I was just sitting here thinking that we started our conversation off, uh, with the building of CTE, and it has gone to the fact now that the potential with this new thing coming up, of maybe even having a closing a couple of elementary schools. You're talking about, man, y'all know where I'm going with that. You're talking about a political, I'm not a political, but a community uproar.
It creates a, a challenge to message things, definitely.
Does it, does it not?
Yeah.
It does.
This, this, this is wild.
But, but there still is, there's the need for the CTE center in order to meet the, you know.
Oh, nobody's, nobody arguing that.
Yeah, a- a- and, uh, and, and the closing of schools is to meet a completely different budget item, uh, you know, for operational expenses, not capital expenses. But, but I, I, yeah, I get your point, and I agree. How, if we're moving forward with both of those, we've got to figure out how to message that.
It's got to be done, boy, with kid gloves on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you all again for, uh, scheduling, scheduling this meeting and hosting us this afternoon.
Chairman Thompson, Chairman Thompson, I just want to thank you as well on behalf of the school board and, um, meeting with everyone tonight. I appreciate the time, um, giving us a chance to, you know, describe what's going on. I know there's a lot, lot to take in. Um, I will say, I, I, I told everybody that I could talk to, I feel like our boards have made good progress together over the last couple of years. Um, this is just, it's a bump, it's a real big bump, but I do think we can negotiate it. I think we can move forward. Um, so I'll, we'll continue to talks, and as we know more, we'll let you know more.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk is passing out a letter, this is hot off the press. I mean, I'm talking hot off the presses, I think Final Touches was even put on it as late as probably four and five o'clock. County staff has been working on it. Wanted to pass this out for everybody to go around, we'll give you a couple of minutes to look at it. And, uh, I'm gonna ask you, uh, uh, I'm gonna ask our board for, uh, a motion and a second on whether we want to go. I think, I thought it was very, uh, cool that, uh, Dr. Sears ended his talk with this. If you look at the diagram on page three, it will tell you where we stand with our neighboring counties, and, uh, it speaks for itself. And, uh, with that being said, uh, this was for informational purposes only, this meeting. And, uh, I thought it was a very good informative meeting, and I too, uh, am appreciative for everything, uh, that goes on. And, uh, for myself, I would like to, uh, propose, uh, that this type, uh, forum, uh, be more often than less often. We need to do this more, and the boards need to be informed and targeted, uh, more, and, uh, I, for one, uh, in my career, especially in law enforcement, I don't like dealing with surprises, which that's what we deal with. I like for everything to be very transparent and upfront. So, uh, with that being said, there's something else to think about, that we do this on a, at least a couple of times a year.
I agree.
And, uh, for that right there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, my question is, because we're dealing with this very, very compressed budgetary time schedule that, that we have, what are the next steps in terms of, of understanding if the county is gonna need to be involved in stopgap measure, or whether there's a desire to be, um, and how we're gonna work through our, uh, budgetary processes collectively? Uh, Chris, we need to figure that out, do we not?
That's what, uh, I had that written down here, uh, uh, Ms. Smith, that, uh, we're gonna have to defer to staff, to our staff and school, and y'all gonna have to have some heart-to-heart meetings and, uh, come back with some proposals. I think, I'm only gonna echo what I've heard other members in here. I, uh, I do not like, I do not like, uh, putting elementary schools, kindergartens, seniors on the buses. And I don't, and I, I don't like closing schools, especially when we're talking about building schools.
True.
I mean, that's, and, uh, you guys, you guys, I, I think, I think it's incumbent, I mean, that's, that's why, that's your jobs. I gotta get together and come up, and, and, and yes, yes, it's gonna be, speaking from, from the board, from my part, it's gonna take some skin in the game for both sides. Because ultimately, it's coming back to our taxpayers. And I, I, I don't think, I don't think for myself that we can put a finger on any one reason why enrollment's coming down, why homeschooling and all of that, but I think there are multiple things. And, uh, what they are, but I, I, I agree one hundred percent with, with what you said, Ms. Smith. Y'all gonna have to, y'all gonna have to dedicate some time to this, and yourself, some ideas, anyway.
Well, we, we've given you some ideas. I mean, I know you don't like them, okay? But to, to cover these gaps, this is what we will have to potentially do. And, and we will keep looking, and we will get better numbers from the state. Uh, but, I mean, a- again, we didn't throw these out to scare anyone. We, we know this is how we have to close a gap, if left to our own device. Uh, i- it's just unfortunate. But it's, you know, we have a lot of professional staff that know these things, they look at it, we will continue to look. Um, but these options are, are realistic and on the table, given with what we're facing.
I think, uh, I think for what I'm hearing from the staff, from, from the board, by our next meeting, we're gonna have to have some dedicated time to really discuss and get to the meat of some of this, correct? Maybe even before then if we have to. But definitely by our next meeting, we gotta have some. All right, have you had time to look over that letter? I like to have a, have you, have y'all had time to look over?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent letter.
I, I like, I, I'll, I like to have a motion, whether we send it or not send it. I like for it to be a joint effort from, from the school board and, and everybody.
Absolutely.
Uh, I think we can do that, uh, just from a voice vote, if we have a, an effort to send it. I thought it was pretty cool that we, I know y'all had been talking, but, uh, that the, the letter's prepared. Did you notice there on that graph, Franklin County's the top?
Yeah.
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 And I understand, I think it was, uh, what'd you say, Clark County back in, uh, New Virginia was above us. It's only, it's only a couple in the state, that's a couple of other jurisdictions in the whole Commonwealth that are close. And we're right there at the top, and it comes down from the property values.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to our board, um, to accept and approve the submission of this letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, uh, and I guess, Mr. Chairman, the school board could come in with their own motion.
So I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor signify with a say aye. Any opposed for the same side?
Okay.
Chairman.
Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion that, uh, we as a school board, um, joined with the Board of Supervisors, agreeing to this letter and, uh, sending it forward.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I think you got your answer, I'll just go forward, and we'll take your, that way. Uh, before we close it, is there any more, uh, uh, discussion? Anybody got anything you want to say? If not, I will, uh, say Happy New Year and adjourn the Franklin County Board of Supervisors until their next meeting on January the sixteenth at three o'clock in this room.
And, uh, our school board stands adjourned until Monday for our regular meeting. Closed session started at four thirty, regular session started at six, okay?
Thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you again.